It is six o'clock for our February twenty twenty five regular board meeting. I'd like to call to order. If we could, uh, both of our calls starting down at the end here would be great.
Dave Larson, DM, Director District Five. Terrence Proctor, Director District Four. Make sure they.
Doctor Nazi Podros was superintendent.
Charlie Simpson, District Three.
Kate Culler, Director District Two.
Ian Hallen, Junior Student Representative.
Perfect. So, welcome everyone that's here. We have some guests here that. Um, appreciate you guys coming. If you guys have a comment that you wanted to make or anything, please be sure to sign in at the front. Um, want to welcome everybody here. Um, let, we're gonna start with the land acknowledgement. Director Larson.
We in the Tuckola School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle. The Duamish and Mupesu people, past and present, in honor with gratitude, the land itself and the Duamish and Mupesu tribes as a public school district. We have a responsibility for the stewardship of the land. And we strive to work alongside the Duamish and Mupesu people who have been living and working here since time immemorial. We further acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. We remember that black and brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors. Over the centuries to today, of all immigrant labor, including voluntary involuntary traffic forced and undocumented peoples. In the building of what we refer to as the United States. As a school district leadership, we pledge to recognize and work against systems that have been historically currently enforced and create inequities among the people we serve.
Thank you. We'll be now standing for the flag salute of the is up my right. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God indivisible, with every. So this evening, we're gonna be reading the Tuckola School kind of board group and values agreement. I'm gonna be reading that. Here we have it up front. Um, I'm gonna read the entirety today, but I think going forward, we're just gonna do the blue bullet points. But this is something that we came up as a group here at the board that we want to. Foster and show from us and then also as community members and staff that are joining. So we'd like to start with transparency, be honest. Speak or communicate with your point of view and why. Explain what you're doing in understandable or more simple terms. Ask clarifying questions and break down what's being said. Courage. Speak frankly about the uncomfortable things. Listen deeply. Listen to understand, not to respond. Minimize multitasking. Just the brainstorm. Lean into tough conversations, own mistakes and address unintentional impacts. Righteousness. Relentless pursuit of exploring the right thing to do, to be or become. A challenge versus taking the easiest or cost effective path. Curiosity. Ask questions for understanding. Suspend judgment. Respect. Center humanity. Find out what respect means to each other. Act deliberately, seeing the whole person, recognizing what each of us might be bringing in that day. Ask what would be the impacts on. Or so in keeping with those, the front of our mind, I would like to ask for approval of the agenda. So, second. All in favor? Great. Oh, I hear our director who, great. Okay, so we'd like to move on to our public comment part of it. I do have one that I am going to be reading, but before I do do that. Want to make sure that if there's anybody here or in the waiting area that needs to be heard. Yeah, I think so. If there's no one other than Finley. Okay, so I'm gonna read the one that we have here. Public comment that was sent in by email. Uh, we did refer to this last, um, meeting that was here. I believe we've already responded, of course, but, um, we want to make sure that it is heard and all comments are heard. So it says, hello, my name is Jose. I'd like to provide a written public comment by email today. I'm very disappointed with the super intense communication last week about the weather. I was not clear, not good, and it caused many problems for my family. I hope that in the future, if we have a snowy, bad, icy weather again, the communications will be better. The messages should be clearly said, which stays there at school too. When snow or ice are around us. On Thursday, I did not know if we were sending our kids to school or not. First, we thought there was no school, then we heard there was school, there was no communication, clear communication at all. This caused a lot of stress and problems for my family, for me and for my children. They missed some school and that's not good. Says, please do better next time and think about the families. Thank you, Jose. Thank you, Jose, for writing the comment. If anybody else would like to write comments, please do. Feel free to email them. I'm in person. It would be great. Okay, so if there's no other, nobody else is in there, we're gonna go on to the student representative report.
Okay. I wrote it out, but it's on my phone, so I'm.
Super.
Uh, since the last board meeting under my role as junior student representative, I went to two, uh, went with the two other student reps to Olympia to advocate for our students. I believe my insight into the arts and being a junior, uh, served me well, um. And what I said, uh, about my experience under the current economic situation, uh, was powerful. And I believe that our other student representatives said very powerful words to our representatives that we put our best foot forward for Tuckola School District. Um, I attended the most recent budget advisory meeting, now joined by Rihanna. This is great because beforehand I was the only student on that committee, um. And now there is stepping one, there is two, which that's a big improvement, um. Uh, me and Rihanna compiled our priorities in accordance with what we found would best serve the needs of the students of Tuckola School District. Uh, I went to the Gates Foundation for an educational roundtable where we heard from the president of the Independent Colleges of Washington. And the executive director of, I forgot the acronym, but of the, you know, other state schools like U-Dub and, um. We heard from both of them. We learned about what colleges are doing to best serve their students in accordance with, you know, current times and co post COVID and all that. And, uh, we're going to use that information to, you know, apply that to best prepare our students, uh, for higher education. We're going to be going to the portrait of a graduate meeting, uh, at Foster and we will be share our learnings there where they can then equip into practice. Um, thank you.
Perfect.
For me, since the last board meeting, as my new role as a sophomore student rep, I also went with our other seniors to Olympia. And we were able to meet with two of our senators and a member of our Supreme Court. And I was able to give them my insight on our budget cuts from the previous year, and I believe mine and my peers' advocacy advocacy were well said to them. And I also attended the most recent budget meeting with, um, budget advisory meeting with Aiden, where we were able to list out our priorities on the needs of the students of our district.
Perfect. Could you introduce yourself? We went around the.
Um, I'm Rihanna Villa, who's the sophomore student representative.
Thank you. All right, Board of Directors report. We begin here to my.
I didn't have a lot of events between the last, uh, meeting and now, uh, but. Under the offices of a completely different organization, I too went down to Olympia and, um, I had, uh. Done my homework from, we'll see, to, uh, Dave, uh, information that he had emailed me and I slipped it in and every one of our visits. So, uh, and with a, for me, a special emphasis on, uh, to, to quote, promise and keep the funding intact for that. Uh, so that's the best I could do during this period of time, given the, so that's my report.
Super. Thank you. Uh, nothing to do in front of those, you know, we're trying to get a, um. Getting with our community and trying to, to go outside of this area right here so that we can. Meet some of the parents that we, uh, serve, so we're, we're trying to do something towards that. Towards it, so and then we're, of course, getting the high line, that going in with. Also the Tuckola Promise, probably that in years. So I think we're making good progress there. Looking forward to our students this year taking advantage of it as our time is ticking, so. Director Proctor.
Well, not much more since last minute other than progress on two projects we're working on, uh. Mayor's office and the council to get, um. The necessary safety precautions separated for traffic and for, uh, CB, so. We're circling back, I hear a little tour and then. Uh, paying into a coin, get some concrete and so on. Uh, we're gonna figure it out, uh, until we decided to revisit with the. Tuckola Police Department, Showalter and Urban League to do a, uh. A couple of years ago, we did a. An awareness to change the narrative of relations between students and police and resulted in a, uh. A day, uh, basketball game tournament. So we're looking to navigate that to see how it goes. So those are some of the projects we're working on.
Did, did, are we going to the superintendent report after the course?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I skipped. You're, you're good, yep. I knew it was gonna be.
We were just close to getting.
I had a long.
I could maybe come back.
Just.
So first of all, I want to, uh, recognize, um, uh, some of the athletic accomplishments that have been happening recently. So. The boys basketball team at Foster is in the, what they call the Sweet Sixteen, I guess, of the state, um. So they made it into the, um, the state finals. So they'll be down in Longview, uh, later this week and then, um, over to Yakima. Um, actually, they're in a double loss bracket, so they'll be over Yakima if they win or lose and, and to the final, um, twelve, I guess, so. And then, um, the girls' basketball team came within one game of getting into the state finals, so they had a really, really good year as well. Um, and then we had four, um, wrestlers went to the, to the state, um. Tournament in, in wrestling. I don't think any of them got out in the first round, but just to get to the state is quite an accomplishment for all of the students there. And then, and then, um, our cheer squad, um, won a, a state competition in the soft category, which is the way they're doing their cheer. So, so had a really good, a really good winter, um, season of athletics, I would say, for, for Foster High School. Um, and it was at the Portrait of a Graduate where we heard, um, committee where we heard a, a. Presentation from the State Board of Education on, uh, master based learning. It's kind of a different, um. Way of, of, um, providing education that some districts are starting, some schools are starting to look at. It's more of a. Tends to be more project based, hands on, you know, not the kind of traditional sit down and get credits where in the passing courses and things like that. So it'll be an interesting, uh, thing to look at. There's, there's principles in there that could be applied to, I think, even, uh, a more structured, more traditional kind of course. So anyway, we'll see and we'll, we'll be looking forward to the student reports on what they got from the, from the Gates Foundation as well. And, um, was it the Budget Advisory Committee, um, started the exercise of kind of trying to. Put a lot of, um, priorities on the table. It's gonna be, it's gonna be another tough year because we're not gonna get a whole lot, um, more money and. There's probably gonna be some work at, so the exercise of trying to delve through and what's the most important and so forth. So we got. Uh, so good voices there. We got students there now and we have parents and we have, of course, the staff as well. So, um, that process is, is ongoing and those will come back to the superintendent with some recommendations. Um, so that the, also the, the parent advisory with, along with, you know, Dr. Podros and myself. Um, they were interested in the whole area of legislature and how they could, um. Advocate with the legislature for us, which is great. Um, it's always good to have as many people advocating down there for our interest as possible. Um, it was interesting, um, I heard the three, their three kind of, uh, goals that they have are. You know, around academic success and particularly celebrating, you know, uh, when we have, uh, academic successes. Um, also the safety needs of schools and each, uh, safety needs in each building and then also their, their third party is about. Kind of building community sports for our schools, which is also a great goal. So, um. We look forward to working with them. I gave them a bunch of information about the legislature and who to contact. And so, um, the more players we have working, uh, the legislature, um, the better. Um, we did do the Olympia trip, um, um. You know, it was interesting. I think the students enjoyed particularly the visit with, uh, the Supreme Court Justice Mujia. Uh, because he had a, you know, at least once, once he was, is interested in the law and it was, it was interesting. They were kind of engaged in this little competition and said, well, I decided I should become a lawyer in fourth grade and. Mujia decides, said, well, I decided I should become a lawyer in second grade. So, anyway, it was, that's an interesting statement because, you know, we always think about exposing our students to different professions and possibilities and. You know, in some ways, I mean, some people decide much later in life, but a lot of people decide actually very early in life. So giving the, uh, I know in the past we've had, you know, career days even at the elementary schools and it's, you know. Sometimes a lot for a lot of students, they will, they will make up their mind right there. And so, anyway. It was, it was a, a good trip. The students did a, a great job. I think. Unfortunately, had, uh, one of our representatives was out sick, so we didn't see Representative Hackney. And the other, the senator, we didn't actually get to see Bob Osagao because, actually, I went back. I had, we arranged the time and they have a new staff down there and they didn't, I went back and looked. We got confirmation for our time, but they just didn't have us on the list. And so we had, we ended up meeting with one of his legislative assistants, which was fine. I mean, they get the information as well, but we've done that before. Uh, but, um. Anyway, it's, it's, it's kind of interesting. Representative, uh, Hackney and Senator Osagao are, are, are very, have been in general very supportive of our funding requests. Uh, Representative Burkeless is much more skeptical of it and so we're have to work a little bit more on him. But, um, anyway, I just wanted, I know the students, but you didn't necessarily get a. Huge positive response, although he got from the, from Senator Osagao's staff, I think it's quite responsive, but. Representative Burkeless, not so much, but you know, that's part of the deal down there is, you know, you, you just, you, you all did a great job. You're doing the right thing. And sometimes you, you have to just persevere, persevere, persevere. So you should all feel great about, uh, what you did there. Um. Let's see. Oh, yeah, on the, uh, we had the instructional rounds up at, um, Showalter. So, uh, where we went in and visited some, um, three science classes in the sixth, seventh, eighth grade. And the, the, what they, the problem of practice there that we heard that it was, you know, laid out for us was. How do you get, you know, students to, um, kind of understand the various vocabulary? Science is one of those fields that has lots of. Complicated vocabulary that's, um. And, you know, when you think about particularly for MLO students that are working on English and then, you know, put a fairly complicated layer of academic, uh, vocabulary on top of that. It's not an easy thing to do. But first of all, I just want to thank, uh, Showalter for setting that up, organizing it, you know, we went and saw three, um, different, uh, classes. One of the things that, um, actually I didn't count, but I'm interested in this a little bit more, but. Um, it was interesting and we've heard this actually from our students, um, and our teachers about. How the class sizes are getting bigger and bigger and, and that becomes, uh, we, we attended three fairly large classes. I don't know what the numbers are, maybe like thirty to forty, I'm guessing, something like that and, which is really too big, um. Given the, the needs that our students have. And so that's one of the things I'm really interested in, in kind of getting a handle around that. And, and presenting that as a part of the advocacy work to the, to the, uh, legislature elevating that a little more, the students pick up on that. But, you know, that's, that's a really, um, important issue in terms of getting the quality of our, um. Uh, instruction going. So, um, I guess I can just do the next one, the legislature.
I'll make sure director.
Okay, okay. So I'll come, you come back here for.
President.
Yeah, great. Um, uh, thanks so much. Sorry, I can't be there in person this evening. Um, uh, so, uh. Similarly, I was able to attend those instructional rounds at Showalter. Um, it was really great to, um, to get to experience kind of that curriculum. In action in the classroom. Um, and I just wanted to just share some gratitude for the Showalter team. Um, the way that y'all are approaching this work with such curiosity, um, right? Really grounded in, uh, um. Uh, how we can just make science more accessible to all of our students. Um, so it was a really great thing to see. I really appreciated the, the process and the preparation, um, and the care that went into those instructional on visits. I look forward to the next one. Um, that's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good comment, cause I can move on the ledge, um, but back to the athletics. I just wanted to appreciate the police department and the fire authorities for showing up for the, um. Wrestling team to send them off to state. Um, there were people there that videotaped it and got it on social media and I just thought that was pretty special for them and the coaches to be celebrated. So.
I actually want to, sorry, go to the, to the superintendent report before we move on to the. Great, thank you.
All right, everybody. Thanks. Um, happy February, end of February. Um, just acknowledging that this month was Black History Month. Um, and many of our schools had celebrations, um, within their schools and their classrooms. Uh, I also want to acknowledge that, um, this weekend, coming up weekend is, um, the holiday Ramadan for our Muslim family staff and staff. Um, so that's coming up. And so, uh, we've sent out notifications to staff just to be mindful of things, especially as our students are getting ready for assessments and. Coursework and making sure that teachers are thinking through some of those things. Um, I also want to share that I've been following very closely as well as my team. Um, oh, we're working very closely with OSPI, who are attending webinars, meetings, uh, reading all of the things that are coming out. Um, and they're giving us guidance. They're using their legal teams to assess. Any things that might affect us as schools that are coming out of some of the federal changes. And so. We are staying on top of that and if there's anything that actually impacts staff or students, we will let people know. Uh, but right now, um, things are just moving forward. So we've been doing that. Um, I was gonna do a report on all the athletics wins as well, but Director Larson already did that. So we will make sure and capture some of those in, uh, communication to all staff. Um, it's great, our cheer team, our basketball team and our wrestling team. Um, it's just been great to just have these major celebrations, uh, for our students. Um, one of the things to share about the boys' basketball, they are the King Cole Lake Division champs, they're the King Cole Two A Division champs. And they're also the C-Team District champs. So I think that's kind of important to share and yes, and so they're going off. And I, we, it's just a nice celebration for all of our, um, students in Foster High School. Um, just a couple of district updates real quickly. So back to Tuckola Promise. Uh, we've been meeting very closely with Highland College. We've had three meetings with them so far. Um, try and make sure that we actually have things in place so our spring seniors can take advantage of the promise of. Uh, some financial support for their first two years in college. So that's working in place. And we're, we're working hard to get all of that up and running. Once the website's up and we're gonna send out a massive communication, um, to all of, um. The families in Tuckola School District. Um, our next advisory meeting, so for those of you who are attending or wouldn't come, it's gonna be March twentieth. Um, at three thirty, or four o'clock, it's four o'clock here. Next, uh, uh, March twentieth. Yes. And then, yeah, sorry, that, and then coffee with Carly, we had to reschedule Cascade View, so we have two coming up in March. Uh, March fifth will be at Tuck L and then, uh, March twelfth, they're all Wednesdays. A morning at eight in the morning will be at Cascade View and they all start at eight in the morning. So just to say, these aren't just for the schools. These are for anybody in Tuckola School District. So if you're a family that's at Foster and you want to, you're dropping off your kid at CB. Or if you're just in the neighborhood and you don't coffee, stop by. Okay, so this is not just for Cascade View families. This is for any family. That wants to come, they can come to any of the schools. So we'll have Tuck L on the fifth and we'll have Cascade View on the twelfth. Uh, Portrait of a Graduate Committee. I just want to thank Executive Director Randy Spalding, uh, from the State Board of Education. Who actually came along with Mary for top face, our former board member, to talk about all the work they're doing and we're trying to align our work to that. That next meeting will be, um, Thursday, March sixth at Foster High School at three P M. All right? Okay, input at weather. I just want to talk a little bit about that and address that, just kind of, um. Share the process for folks. I already shared it with staff, but I want to share it with anyone here in the community. Uh, first of all, thank you, thank you, thank you to our transportation director who, I don't know if people know this, but Director Suzie Kelly. Whenever we get a warning about weather conditions, Suzie Kelly and or her team are out at three A M driving the streets. Work, you know, whatever the weather is. So if it's windy, it's raining, snowy, it's icy, she is driving the streets. I'm the lucky one who gets the four A M plug. That tells me what, what's happening. And then I will say, there's several people here in this room, as well as Liliana and other folks. We have a safety team and they all get on, and believe it or not, they get on at four fifteen with me on a Zoom call. So we can address human resource staffing implications, communications, operations, power, all of those things. And we come and have come together at four fifteen A M. Believe me, I was like, my eyes were bloodshot after four days of that. And we get together and we come together and we make decisions based, we, and we check in with, uh, local districts. Uh, we make decisions based on what's best. We've had two, one occasion where our, my decision changed rapidly because we thought it was. Clear, we thought we could get it clear and then last minute a bunch of snow came and that happens sometimes. So I just want to let people know that that is our process. We've been doing this for years this way and other districts do it similarly. And then we are on the calls with other superintendents and, and transportation folks to make sure we're all making the best decision and be able to, et cetera. Um, I will say our process is to communicate change to the regular schedule. We don't usually communicate if it's a normal schedule. And so I did, I got that, I heard that. And so I think that's important, but it's our process is usually to communicate change to not cause confusion. So that's typically our process. I think that's been the process in most districts I've been in, so, but it's something we can talk about. So I just want to let people know it's only to communicate any major change to a regular schedule start. Um, I just want to share that we have blocked, our staff appreciation date is Thursday, May twenty second at five P M at Foster. That's to celebrate all the people that are retiring, their years of service. And anyone in the community, of course, our, our, all of our, uh, Foster, uh, not Foster, but our Tuckola School District staff will be invited to attend to that. Want to share, we launched this winter our first unified soccer team within elementary schools. Uh, they have two weeks left, so if anyone wants to go check out Unified Soccer, so Unified Soccer, Unified Sports, for people who don't understand what it is. It's sports where our students who may have disabilities and our peer students who don't have disabilities play together on teams. And then they play against, uh, uh, our local schools. So it's something that we launched this year with Special Olympics. We got a grant. And so those, they started their soccer season and then in spring they're gonna have playing football and volleyball. And it's coed and it's all abilities and it's a really great thing. And actually, uh, Gabe has said it's one of the best things that he did. You have your hand up.
Basketball.
Oh, basketball, that's right, basketball, it's basketball, not soccer, basketball. Thank you for saying that. So they're actually gonna have two, so this Thursday, four P M. It's gonna be at Tuck L and CB. And then next Thursday at CB and Thorndike, it's four P M. So that's when the games start, basketball. You're right, it's basketball. And then just the board, uh, we're gonna be sending you all an email regarding the community forums that Director Simpson was talking about. We have some dates scheduled and we want you to fix your dates and how we're gonna do the forums. We're planning a community forum. The school board wants to hear from families, all families, about what's working, where they, where concerns and how we move forward. Okay, so we're gonna work on getting those dates to all of you so that you can pick the dates that were, were best for your schedules. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Well, just one back to this course. I had a comment from a alumna. That it's possible this year and the accomplishments of this many teams has not happened in our history all of our year. Does that sound like correct?
Yes, yeah.
It's like, there's reason everybody's getting.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much, Superintendent. Can we now move on to the legislated date?
Um, so, um. Let's just go through what they call very, um, kind of cutoffs. This is where, you know, bills that were introduced are, you know, if they're not moving, then they, they're. Basically dead for this session. So unfortunately, the Laffy Poverty Bill, which is the one that I've been working on the most, um. It is not surprised if it was, um. Senator Woman, Richard Allen killed it. And so, um, that's, uh, dead as a bill for this session. However, um. Things never totally die because. um, things never totally die because it can still, you know, it's funny, it could be slipped into a budget. You know, at the end of the, uh, the end of the session, and so we always say nothing's ever really good until the session's over. Um, it's preferable to have it in law because if it's in law, then it continues. If it's a budget, it's just good for the one or two years of the budget. But, um, I feel pretty good that, you know, this, this, uh, concept and this bill moved quite a, uh, bit farther this year. I actually got a hearing last year, videoed a hearing, so it's moving along, and there's a lot more people aware of it, so. Um, anyway, we're, I'm gonna keep working on it, but, um, the bill itself is not gonna, um, get through this year. Um, it's coming down, uh, a lot of this is coming down to the, to the big three, which we're talking about, special education, transportation, and mature supplies and operating costs, all those bills are still alive. Uh, most people are kind of thinking special education will probably get, um, the chunk gets, like I say, it's all dependent, a lot of it's dependent on the revenue forecast in the middle of March and how much money they actually have. The student transportation bill would be really good for us, and it's, they, they have focused on McKinney-Vento students, and you know, four hundred bucks a year for McKinney-Vento would be very helpful to us. Uh, we'll see if that makes it through or not, and then the third one of this is probably the mature supplies and operating, uh, costs. Um, I'll comment on all of those other than, uh, there was a new one that, that popped up that, um, looks like it, it may have some wheels to it, that's the last one, that five oh seven available time programs to decrease, uh, chronic absenteeism. The interesting thing about that one is that there's, if that one gets through, there's gonna be some grants, um, that are gonna be available to, um, community organizations to support students and, and, you know, immediately popping into my mind is there really? Uh, could, you know, I mean, they're already in, working with our students, and so uh, we'll keep an eye on that one, that one could be a nice, uh, nice grant for whether it's, um, you know, the, uh, ninth grade failure rates, or, you know, uh, kind of, uh, paying attention to students if their absenteeism starts going up, you know? Let's get somebody out there and figuring out what's going on. So that one's, that one's kind of an interesting, uh, one to follow. Um, the other big ones are related to, um, uh, primarily, uh, thirteen fifty-six, so there's a bunch of bills that are kind of trying to help districts solve their, their, uh, their, uh, financial problems by allowing more local dollars to be collected, which is, as I say, going completely backwards from the theory. The theory was supposed to be, you know, the state's supposed to, um, is not push it back on local taxpayers, but um, the, that bill, if it, if it got through, um, would allow us to raise some more local money, however, we just went out to our levy, and so we probably couldn't take advantage of that for another three years. Although that bill does have a couple of interesting things in there, they have, um, a slight increase in substitute teacher. So the state fund is like a hundred fifty dollars per substitute teacher, and that's from like ten years ago, they've never raised it for inflation, so this would raise it up to, you know, closer to two hundred, which I think we paid about two ten, something like that. Um, so that, that would be helpful if that one, if that one went through. Uh, so there's aspects, so we'll be watching that thirteen fifty-six to see which pieces of it, there's a little piece in there for special education to remove the, the cap, which is not gonna help us a whole lot. Um, and it's, the other interesting thing, uh, this is Representative Rook's bill, that he wants to set up an equity task force to kind of study the issue of why the funding system is inequitable. Um, I think we already know why, and I think we know the answers to that, but that's what the legislature does sometimes, and they don't wanna, you know, really take, you know, take ownership, so they just say, well, let's study, let's talk about it for a while. So anyway, that's where the legislature is at this point.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, if there is none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We've got approval of the minutes from January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Then we do the whole.
Yeah.
Agenda, I'll move that.
Do you wanna do A, B, and C? Approval of the launch general plan with that, or just A and B, the minutes?
So I'm shooting for the whole consent agenda, that's what.
Okay, let her do it.
No, I have a consent agenda.
So, second. Perfect. All in favor?
I am.
Alright, that was A, B, and C. Look at that. Like it. Alright, so we're gonna move on to six, board business and discussion, when the board goes final review. Any thoughts or comments, or anything on here?
Has there been any major changes? Maybe we're working on outreach last time.
Pretty much, yeah. Yeah, as, and we were there.
The only comment, um, that I've had, I think this is kind of for the March, um, thing. It's, uh, the fiscal oversight one, and the change to sixty twenty-two. I've been thinking about that one, apparently says six percent. I was suggesting here, maybe making it a range. I think I actually liked the six percent better, we talked about it a little bit, and so I'll probably just leave that. You know, the, what we will work on, and we can work on in some marches, the kind of, uh, the, uh, some, some guidelines to the board for what to watch out for, but I think, you know, it's probably just about to leave that six percent, because we really wanna get there, so.
So are we leaving the range in, and you're just saying you prefer it to be six percent and within that range?
I would, no, the current thing just says five, six percent. That's the minimum. And so I'm, I'm proposing we just leave it that way, but, and this can only be discussed in March, as though policies will come back, so.
I'm only a little lost, it just says four to eight percent, so that's why I was.
Yeah, right.
Originally, I think what the change was to four to eight, then we had the discussion that of keeping it the, what it was originally, six percent.
Okay, so we're gonna go back to six percent?
That would be the proposal, but like I say, we can discuss that in the March.
If you want us to bend it, then, okay.
Director Hoover, do you have any comments?
Um, no, just by the time we approve these, I'll, um, have, uh, some dates in the community engagement, that first action item in the goal, but other than that, that's a man.
Okay. So that would be the final, our final review, and so our final file. Yeah, okay. Okay, I'm moving on to do that and reports review.
Yeah, so the, I'm okay to jump in here, yeah? Right, so, um, in having some conversations with, um, with Dr. Perdrosa, um, and really thinking about, um, how we can, uh, just get more clear on what it is that the board wants to see and hear, uh, when we're getting board reports, um, that includes the spectrum of data that we might ask for at any given time. Um, you know, we've done some restructuring to our board meetings that I think has given us the opportunity to kind of like dive more deeply, um, into the data, um, and, uh, uh, you know, I wanna make sure that we're continuing to think about how we can make the most efficient reports, again, that gets us what we need. Um, but that doesn't continue to put really an excess burden, um, on the team. Um, and so I thought we could have, and, uh, please, Dr. Perdrosa, if you have something additional to add, um, around, uh, to provide some context for what you want us to do. Um, uh, but, um, I, my thought was here is that we could, um, think a little bit about, um, our values. Right? So we did some work, uh, at that board retreat, um, really thinking about what are our values as a board. Um, and then I wanna think about the data and the report, um, and what we hope to see in those, and how those connect back to our values. Um, and so, uh, the, the hope here again is just to have some conversation, uh, to get some clarity, I, I, dare I say, like a a template almost, I, I don't know exactly, and maybe, Dr. Perdrosa, you can speak a little bit to like, what, um, where you want the outcome of our conversation, like what would be the most helpful, um, for the team, uh, but that's kind of the, the, um, uh, the, the prompt and the start of, of what we, what, what we wanted to chat about today.
So one of the things I was wondering is, and may, maybe this wasn't the year to do it, that as we get more, um, more precise in our strategic planning, wondering what reports are really essential to align within the strategic plan, and then analyzing the reports outside of that to see what it is that we could either streamline or get down to a narrow focus, or if it's just data regarding certain subpopulations, instead of getting like, you know, massive reports that maybe are really hard to read, things like that. So I just was wondering if we could be thinking about how do we really streamline the reports in a way that's more aligned to a strategic planning, our goals, the four goal areas, making sure that we're really clear, uh, about those, and then also making, there's something that we have to do. Those reports, for example, that actually are compliance reports that we have to do, like Highly Capable is one that's a compliance report, for example. So those ones, I'm not talking about those, but I'm talking when we look at all the reports, of course, putting aside, putting them in three buckets, looking at the ones that align to the strategic plan, which are the must-have, the compliance, which is a must-have, and then anything else that's outside of that, wondering where it is where the board is, cause maybe five years ago, seven years ago, those weren't really necessary. But maybe now, they're not as much because we're getting different data in different ways. The other thing I just wanted to share is one of the things I've been talking a lot with Director Larson and, and Director Hoover, and so I'm meeting with the team, because one of the things that we talked about with the street data component, right, and making sure we actually, we are really clear too, when we're talking about satellite data and street data and all of these pieces, that we're really clear with ourselves, even when we're reporting, that we have some more consistency in how we're reporting. For example, making sure that there are table formats, making sure that we're talking and breaking down race data or programmatic data, but doing analytics around that. So those are things we're working on, so we're gonna have a recommendation also, um, to the board, uh, by spring, with some type of framework and some expectations, and I'm not as well from our end, what we're recommending as well. But we thought it'd be kind of important for the board to talk about, so you get all these reports, you know, how are you using it, how is it meaningful to you? And if, is there more of something that you wanna see or less? I just wanna hear from all of you, from, you've been doing this for a year now, you've been getting these reports, and just wondering how it's helping you make meaning for the work that we're doing. Or is it more meaningful to go to instructional rounds? Is it more, we don't know that yet, because we're doing that, like, what is meaningful for you to really understand what's happening in the district?
Yeah, can I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think I just want us to be really aware of what pieces of data we're asking for our own curiosity's sake, um, cause I know I find digging into things, getting curious about the data really fun. Um, so what are we doing for our own curiosity's sake versus what information do we really need to be able to make in, in information and data-driven decisions, right? Cause ultimately, that's what we are here to do. Um, and, uh, I think that, that we can find and continue to use those work sessions as opportunities to like, really get into the nitty-gritty of, of, of the data. Um, but I, I, yeah, so I just, just wanna kind of make sure that we are uh, uh, thinking about and really aware of, of what it is that we're asking and why. Um, and is it gonna, gonna, gonna help make us more informed, aligned with our values to be able to make, uh, those data-driven decisions?
So I guess I'll jump out there. Um, I'm, I'm a huge advocate for streamlining our processes and eliminating reports that are perhaps were important years back, but may not be essential now, so that's why I sat with Dave Arshin and went through the list of things that we have reported, and these that we have, what staff has to report out on, to just try to thin that down, and we did thin it down a little, but I don't think it's quite enough. Um, I would like, at, you know, some kind of institutionalized rule where somebody asks for data or report that the council, the council, though, um, or, um, get some kind of majority consensus for it, I don't know, I, I, you know, and I'm worried about staff spending a lot of energy, we've thinned them out a lot, on, on interesting data. But, uh, so that's one half of the balance, the other half of the balance is, I haven't been here that long, and, uh, we may be here now, and have gone through the experience last year, and maybe a couple of years back, where the board didn't get enough in, information, and they didn't have enough to work with. So I wanna balance it with, I don't wanna cripple our ability to to look at things, but, um, uh, I will say, my Boeing uh, years, which is about eleven of them, was learning how to, uh, set things up, they call the, um, the Japanese process for simplifying, and a lot of the things that you set up, once you organize it, so you could do a quick visual sweep and quickly tell the health of what's going on, if you're in a management position, if you're in manufacturing, you can look at your toolset and see about tools there, or one's missing because they put little shadows, and you can see a, a hammer shadow, and it's not there, so something's missing. But, um, here, I think we have to agree on what it is we need to make our basic decisions, and then I'm really relieved to hear you say you're gonna keep the compliance, um, reports, we have to by law, so I, I, I'm glad we're just looking at our options.
So I'm all for, um, streamlining reports as a few kind of, you know, basic, and we can, this would be a good discussion of everything. So I'm always looking for, um, data-related, are, are students growing, academically growing, and, you know, I think a certain amount of, um, you know, if we can, if we can pinpoint exactly what those businesses are, then I think sometimes, you know, we get a lot of stuff, and somewhere hidden in there is the, are the nuggets, but, I mean, I'm, I'm I'd be all for streamlining that to kind of, uh, focus a little bit more. The others, I'm always looking for disproportionality, so I wanna, I wanna see disproportionality, which is consistent with our anti-racist, um, focus. Um, and then, you know, and then I wanna hear, you know, what are we doing about it? What's the analysis on that? And of course, you know, one of our big primary responsibilities is the financial report, so I need to see, you know, how are we doing financially, where's the money going, you know, if we're off track, or are we off track, you know, so there's ample categories. I guess, I don't know, that may fall under compliance, I don't know, some of it does, some of it doesn't. I think, I think we still have some work to do in terms of, like I say, um, getting some guidelines to the boards about how to look at the, I mean, we get these, these reports, and, and a lot of them are the standard accounting, which I suspect most of us probably don't really look at, but, uh, so, so maybe if there's nuggets in there, we need to be kind of instructed on how to look at it. And particularly, that's good for when new board members come on, because they're not gonna, you know, be able to do that, so, um, kind of those are, you know, the, kind of the general, and I, I agree, you know, tying into the strategic plan, which you know, when we're talking about academic growth and disproportionality is, you know, that's, those are right, right there. Um, it is interesting, you know, we're talking about tying back to our values, so one of our values is curiosity. Um, for me, data is always, I mean, good data always, you know, asks the next question, I mean, if you get some data, then there's another question, there's another question, that's how data works when you're using it well. So trying to find that balance, I mean, the, if the idea is in work sessions, you know, we have some more, uh, ability to go in, to go deeper, that's fine, you know, that could be a way to kind of, um, um, separate it out with, or have a little more structured stuff going on, um, you know, if we can, yeah, focus, I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm all for focusing. Some of the reports we have, they are kind of scattered, and if we can agree to get them on some, some key, uh, key things.
True. Let, oh, cause, oh, I think you should always audit, whether or not you're streamlining the process, just too, too much information that doesn't answer or ask the right questions is a waste of time. And not enough information that doesn't give you the tools you need to make decisions is another waste of time, so I think uh, most healthy organizations are in perpetual assessment. So I'm for it.
Yeah, so another kind of overriding principle, you know, students need to be at the center, so that's why I say, you know, student growth, student distortion, you know, those things need to be at the center of what we're doing, we need to know how well our students are doing, and how can we serve them better. As kind of the core principle.
Teachers.
Yeah.
Uh, equipment, it was all that. But, yeah. But I, I, you gotta be careful getting locked into one way, cause times and things change. Yeah, so.
Yeah, and we, as, we, you know, just thinking of, okay, we get a CTE report, uh, we get a technology report, um, you could kind of say, well, those are, you know, those are in service of students, you know, achievements, of student achievement is going well, or, and growth is going well. Hmm, yeah, do we need to go into some of the depths of some of that stuff? That's kind of, um, I have to think about that.
Or look at that students are running the train as well. Or look at that students are running the trade as opposed to the University of College.
Yeah.
Yet that's a direct derivative of the CTE.
Right, 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 right.
You need that data, it may not be on the spreadsheet.
Right.
What are you, what are you guys doing? You guys have been getting all those reports and looking at them. I'm curious. It's a lot.
Any of that make sense to you or?
I, I mean, I, I think that question of how all this is prepared and should be more left up to all of you. So, uh, do you have any opinions?
I feel the same as you.
Yeah.
I think, uh, Director Hoover, I think this is good for another conversation that we have to have as a board to kind of figure out what we want to do. And I think I, I respect what everybody said here at the table, that it's, it's evolving, you know, as, as it goes. And each year or two years, directors need different information as things kind of go back and forth. I, my, my personal thought is I want to know the financial report, make sure we're financially healthy. I want to make sure that the superintendent is doing their job in the position because that where the board is being asked to do that. And then from there, the leadership, the leadership's healthy, it seems like that just, it helps go downhill from there to what else is, is working. So, um, I think if there's no other comments, other than we probably need to add an agenda meeting, set a time to where we can talk about getting this um, set as far as a time where we can have a discussion around what it looks like.
I just have a little bit more to add.
Just, okay.
I have more to add.
Oh, yes.
And because I spoke first, it's difficult because I didn't get the thread. I will um, share two things. When you look at medical reports after you've been uh to the hospital for something, uh, you get a status report and it's under certain categories. And I think we want to get to reduced reviews and I hate to use the word tat dashboard because that was the thing of the eighties. It's a tired word, but there's a way to just go through things very briefly and see the health of the patient without having to dive down into all nitty-gritty of every single test that tests that went to pathology. Um, the second example I give is in project management because that's what I do. And I do status reports all the time. And we start out with the budget, what we start out with the scope. Are we still in scope? So are we still in scope with the strategies that we have? Second, how are we doing financially? Because are we on budget? And then we talk about the schedule. Are we on target with when we said we would do stuff? There's other details that come later and we can pick that out as a board, but I will also offer that up as a model. Of ways to categorize. Within those, I totally wholeheartedly agree, we have slated to our values. I wasn't quite sure if we actually meant our values or we're confusing them with our priorities. But um, I, you know, that's, I'm leaning into the how, but I just wanted to throw it out there for proof of thought before we get to another.
And finally, I think, thank you, uh, received it. I know I do. I think I, I also want to get it on the record that as much as frustrating, some information in volume may be as rolling up your sleeves and trying to figure out, okay, I got the information, did I need that? I was in effect, I am reluctant to say that's not important because it won't be important till I need it. Right, because you, you don't know it. And when I, when I say that, I'm saying that in the context of streamlining and assessing what information on a regular basis is actually important. You gotta be careful, you have, actually, we have to be judicious and wise. Because what may not be, may not only be important in in tracking some, some positive trend, negative trend, or crisis that occurred. And you gotta go back and then how come we didn't have that information? Uh, so when you're talking about adjusting how and what information you regularly assess, that's what I mean by the system of, so yes. Uh, so you, you, you know, if, if we have to be wise and just say, hey, I didn't need all that information yet today. Uh, uh, so, yeah, so I'm, so I think it's a, uh, uh, I guess I said it to say this, it is worthy of its own attention and light shit on it and even how airing on spreading that information when you need it. This does not have to be information as you need.
So can I? Sorry, Director Parker, I, I, it's hard to read the room virtually. Keep going, please. Let me know. I'll jump in when you're done.
I'm, I'm waiting. So.
I, I was just gonna say, let me, let me pose like a scenario and then, so I, I agree around like that we have to maintain the line of still getting the information, even if something doesn't feel as pressing today, right? So, okay, I'm thinking about a data report like iReady, for instance. Um, but that data report is huge, right? And we're effectively asking the team to pull pieces of that data report uh, or that, that, yeah, that data pool and then put it into a report that best reflects whatever it is they're trying to communicate to us. And what I think happens is that they, they, we, we get presented with the information, the data points that directly align with what they're presenting. And we ask for all of these different layers of data that live within that larger report. And so I guess I'm even thinking about, you know, what would it look like to, on one hand, really trust the team, right? That they're doing that data analysis on a regular basis. And we've, we've heard it, we, uh, we've heard examples and we, we see, I mean, I see evidence of that happening. Um, and that we have a strategic plan and goals that we as a board have approved, right? So that's where our focuses areas are right now. And in theory, where we want to make sure that we are seeing that growth, right, in those areas aligned to our, our, our strategic plan. So I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking, could there be a place where like, y- yeah, we get all of the data from the iReady, but when we're presented with the data in a report, it's directly connected to the goals that are embedded within our strategic plan. And if there are other data points that we're curious about, we have that full data report that we can go to, but we're not necessarily requesting adjustments to those reports based on those individual data sets that we might just be curious about. Thoughts on that? Or does that make sense? Kind of the difference between that and like, we're not talking about eliminating reports that would be useful information for us.
I think as well stated, point taken.
Yeah, I think we have to agree on what, what the importance, um, what's important to get, for example, the iReady, what's important to get out of. So, you know, for me, that's student growth is the big thing to get out of there and then agree on what the, you know, what the measures are that we want to see.
Is that different, though, from what measures are in our strategic plan?
No.
And the goals, yeah.
Also, the strategic plan hasn't written out this, so there's a stretch control and then there's a growth goal that's targeted to two groups of students specifically that have been challenged, right, in our system. And so if we were just going to report on that, it would be maybe like three pages, honestly, based on. But I, I, so I told Director Larson that I do agree that that high level um, equity analysis, right, that high level, looking at like those subcategories, the analysis part and how we pivot and shifting, that really is the critical piece, right, for us in terms of that. But we do need to report on, and you do need to report, like, you can't just pull, for example, our Latino students. You just can't pull that data with looking at other groups as well. You have to have that data. But our target is, is, that's one of our target groups, right? So that has to come to the board for sure. So and then comparing that to other groups. And our, our, from last year to this year, our, how the students made growth, are they meeting their targets and so forth? So, but if we were going to do that just based on the strategic plan, it'd be two pages versus what's here. So I mean, it'd be much smaller. I don't know if it's three pages, I'm just, but it's smaller than what you're done with today.
I want to pop in and say that's a status report that I was talking about earlier.
Yeah.
We had the high level measures that we, we look at, things are going south or we just haven't looked at in a while. Um, I think staff should be prepared to provide supporting materials, like really quickly or just have it attached somewhere in a, when they send in their materials to us, but it's not part of the presentation.
So if we're talking about the, the iReady report, most of the volume of that is, is proficiency before and after, which is not growth. So for me, maybe just eliminating all that. I mean, if it comes out automatically, um, and there's not a lot of staff effort, okay, it might be interesting to look at it, but that's not an area that I wouldn't want staff spending any significant amount of time generating lots of stuff for us. Now, they may want to, what they want to generate for the buildings is, that's a, you know, a different issue.
Right, just maybe a way to get to it if you want to dig in, because I think I heard Director Proctor say, sometimes you might need it, right? But at the high level, we're getting that doctor's report or that project, project report that's giving you the all the symbols. But if they start to tank against the um, strategic plan that we have, either on schedule or on performance or, you know, what is costing us, that's time to look under the hood.
Yeah, and that's a, a little bit of, if, if you say you're just going to focus on Black and Latino students, what happened if Asian students all of a sudden tanked and you never saw that because it wasn't reported? So, yeah, there's, there's, there's a balance there.
You have to have it all, but yes, that's the target.
Yeah, but I mean, if we're talking simply about the iReady one, all this, this proficiency measures, I mean, most of the volume of this is proficiency.
Sure.
I don't need to see that. It doesn't really help. I want to see growth measures, is what I want to see.
Yeah, I mean, I think I just used iReady as an example of a data set because that's one that comes up often. Um, but I think the, the approach will apply to any data set we're talking about. Um, so I wonder, like, conversation to be continued for sure. I, I, does it feel, again, safe to say that we are going to request that the team provide information that is kind, like, data points that are connected to our strategic priorities and our goals under those strategic priorities? We have the ability, right, as a board, to update those strategic priorities. Um, and I think we can also, um, uh, you know, say, hey, you know what, I feel like maybe I, I want to do a little bit of deep dive, make sure that we're, we're still really focused on the same demographic group. Let's do a deep dive of our, of our, of X data set at our next work session. Um, so I think we find spaces and times to do, again, do that more now, analysis work. But a- as far as like what we're asking of the team to put those reports together for these, specifically these regular board meetings, keeping them really aligned with the goals. And then, again, having access to the larger data set that we can go to if we want a, a different data point to then surface at the board meeting. But to be continued.
Okay, so if we're going to continue, I guess we're going to make a, a, a space and time for that. And then we'll talk about that at an agenda setting meeting because I'm, I'm hearing a lot of good stuff that needs to all be looked at. Is there any other comments or questions on the data reports review? Nope. Okay, I'm going to be moving on then to the questions-only presentation. Uh, first, we're going to have our monthly financial statement. Is there any comments or questions about this report?
Yeah, so, as I'm getting concerned about the, as I mentioned, because I've got class sizes, but you got the secondary level because, you know, students have been commenting on that for a while, teachers have been commenting on that. And we don't really have a measure. And if you do report here, you know, we have what the class sizes are at the elementary grade. And there are certain financial incentives, particularly at the K three level, to keep those under control. We also have financial disincentive incentives in our collective bargaining agreement. If class sizes get over so big, then, you know, it costs us more money to pay the teachers and so forth. So I'm just, this is what I'm, I'm, the reason I'm interested in having some, you know, so you're saying you don't really have data on the class sizes at the secondary level. The reason I'm interested because this is a part of, you know, advocacy work with the legislature that I think it would be helpful to have some, you know, look, our class sizes, you know, at, at Scholter have steadily gone up in the last three, you know, they used to be twenty-five, now they're thirty-five, whatever it is. Because um, that's a pretty big deal. Class sizes, you know, matter. And so that's why I'm, you know, you know, just, I mean, saying, let's think about maybe how we could present some of that data.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I mean, I agree, it's, it's important data to be looking at. Okay.
Just a quick question on that. When you had your, you know, two pages, you had some pretty neat uh graphics in there. And was, was class sizes going up and down part of that?
No. That's why, that's why I've been, I've been thinking about that because, like I say, we've been hearing that from students for a while and, and also teachers. So I, I, we need to kind of elevate that up. And it's, um, it's going to impact, I mean, it's obviously impacting, I think Alex brought it up probably at the, when we were talking about the legislature. And so I think some, having some, some, some kind of data behind that would be really helpful in watching that because also we want to, you know, once we get, starting to get the financials back in order, you know, there's going to be a priority about, okay, where do we start? I mean, you know, we need to, you know, not have administrators going on furlough, we need to do IPD back with the teachers. So class sizes are probably pretty well up there, you know, we need to start easing that back down. So, anyway.
And then the, the changes, because I think we see graphs across the year on what's happening to the numbers.
On class sizes?
Yeah.
Not at secondary, well, no, not at secondary level.
Enrollments.
Oh, enrollment, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm talking about class.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. No, we definitely see enrollment. I'm talking about class sizes, which is impacts, impacts directly to teachers and students.
So I see the questions that you offered though here, it seems like it's pretty, for right now, uh, incremental uh, in terms of whether it was in- increases or decreases.
For secondary class sizes?
Well, I'm looking at your questions here.
Yeah.
And so, and looking at her responses.
Yeah.
And so.
So there are.
On that, what do we want to get?
Yeah, so, I think, uh, one of the things I can look into is seeing what kind of data I can build for you, just to see what class sizes are. Yes, at the secondary, especially at Scholwalter, we know that class sizes are a bit high.
Yeah.
So it was weighing that with, uh, you know, the cost of an additional teacher versus it was paying some overages and how does that pan out with the financial situation? So we know it's a little bit tight. Um, and so we're looking at that and then also looking at what projected enrollment would be next year so that we can plan for that according to bring some of those class sizes back down. So.
Right.
That's, that is something that is definitely on the way.
Yeah, and so it may have financial impacts, but it also has instructional impacts and impacts on the quality of our education. Yeah, so, um, and also interested in, uh, I keep hearing that, that we're getting grants late. Um, I'm, I'm really interested in, it, it sounds like what you're kind of implying is that, um, well, at least, okay, the only grant being held back. But here we are in February, we're well halfway through the year. I mean, my expectations on grants is that we're, you know, if we qualify, then we get it. And it sounds like that's not the case.
On this particular grant, it's not the case. I don't know why OSPI is so particular about this set of grants and why it took them so long. I did reach out, unfortunately, the individual, I think it got bottlenecked. Uh, there were a lot of schools in the state that was receiving OSSI funding and they combed through the application process with a fine-tooth comb. And if there's anything in there that they don't like, they would question it. And so then you have to go through the review process again. On top of that, the individual that was in charge of this grant was out on some duty for a period of time. And so a number of school districts, schools and school districts are just now starting to receive their awards. So like you said, Cascade New was awarded last week.
Right.
Scholwalter, um, had to answer a couple of questions. Um, so hopefully that will have that approval here, um, by early next week. Um, so that's, that's where we are in that process.
So to me, that's unacceptable, um, uh, work on OSPI. I mean, it shouldn't be our problem, you know, whatever they need to do to get that work money out. So I think we need to think about, you know, um, putting some pressure, whatever mechanisms we have to, you know, put some pressure on them, just, just let them know it's unacceptable. I'm sure there's other districts that would probably agree with that. And I don't know if the superintendent levels that's the right level or.
I want them out for every committee, if they have, so I can talk about it. And we need with TJ, so maybe we can bring it up in our quarterly.
Because it makes it really tough, you know, when we're trying to plan for support for our students throughout the year and the money doesn't come and the staff doesn't come and then, you know, the students are not going to get what they deserve. So anyway, yeah, that was, I didn't, that was a kind of new one on me. I hadn't heard about that before. And it sounds like it's a one that needs to be addressed. So.
Yeah.
That's all on this one for me.
And the, on the questions or comments?
And the other questions or comments from the directors? Okay, then we can roll to be the financial forecast. Any comments or questions?
Compared to a month ago, how do you feel about where we are right now?
Um we're similar to last month. I'm projecting down just a tad compared to last month. But it was also January when actual importment from the state kind of chews up with our enrollment and kind of what's happening in that aspect. Um some of our portionment overall went down, which was in the projection. I was kind of projecting that anyways before we like hit January. Uh but we have really increased on our running start numbers. Uh so even though we get the portionment, that money is kind of an in and out. So we get the money in, but we're giving it right back out. We don't keep any of it. It goes straight to the community colleges. Um so that, you know, that had a little bit of impact to this as well. So but I was planning for that because I was seeing that those numbers were high. I was also seeing what enrollment was looking like compared to my budget. Uh so maybe some of those adjustments is a result in in most categories, so.
And then at one point, we talked about borrowing to keep cash flow going during the valley. So we still on track for what we plan?
We are. So eight hundred thousand dollars is due on March twelfth back to the capital projects fund. Um even though fund balance was a kind of was just a ten to higher, which is not normal, usually just starting to decline a little bit. Um but it wasn't, it was just, I essentially call it flat because even though it was a slight increase, it really wasn't anything that, you know, made me go, huh, what's really going on here? Um however, March, you know, and the first half of April, first part of April, we will see fund balance decline. Um it's not unusual. It happens in every single school district until that our next property tax proceeds at the end of April. So um I do anticipate paying the loan that I need, having some cash flow. I just don't anticipate I need to borrow as much as I originally asked in December. Um so obviously I haven't taken any loan because we're still holding this eight hundred thousand. Uh but I will let you know as soon as we repay and what I think I need to borrow to get me through. Um and I may just do that borrowing through the first part of August, just to get us through the end of the fiscal year, but I will pay it back.
That all sounds healthy. Ignorant question on my part because I've still tuned in. Um do these comes with first hand interest?
Yes.
And are they starting to skyrocket?
Uh yeah, so they are sort of, yeah, so it's the effective interest rate as of the date that we pretty much borrow. And so it's watching that interest rate as well. So I'm I'm more into the now as soon as we pay this eight hundred thousand to do the short term borrowing and only take what I need for as long as I need. And so that's something that I would lay and consider as we're doing the short term borrowing because interest rates are higher. That means that we owe more to the capital projects fund as we're repaying. Um so I I want to make sure that I'm really mindful of that so that we're not borrowing for long term.
Right, so excellent. You're just watching the delta whether or not long term or the lower risk app, not worthwhile compared to short term at a hundred percent and return and payback.
Right.
On the long term ones, are there any punishments for paying off early?
So we, no, there's no punishment for paying off early, but as I'm watching watching our cash flow, that's why I was hitting off. So our cash flow because fund balance is starting to weaken, cash flow is also starting to decline. And so I just need to make sure we have ample cash flow to pay our bills. Um I'll repay, I'll see where we are and then I'll determine how much I need tomorrow for that point. Thank you very much.
So the issue with the running start is actually another one we need to think about. So running start, number of the running start students has typically been like ninety, hundred, something like that. This year it seems to have jumped to forty and the question, actually this came up at the the portrait of a graduate, the question is always, so why the increase? And, you know, the answer from the our counselors was, well, students are taking advantage of the fact that they can get free college credits, which makes a whole lot of sense. The problem with us financially is that, you know, we get about seven percent of that when it goes off to the community college and and so it hits financially and it begs the question, you know, why do we not have more college and high school courses at the high school? Which so at this, you know, we need to be thinking about how do we get, how do we, if 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 the reason students are taking it because they want high school or college credit, why do we not do that inside of our school and then we get the full full amount for them rather than sending them off the high line or they get all the money? So that's a, that's a been an ongoing issue for that fostered cell.
I want a comment, comment from that. Oh, from all the, you know, full time, full time running start students, I know it is that exact issue. It's kind of like a flight from the high school because they see the budget cuts and they're worried about, you know, certain high level classes getting removed and they don't feel stable staying at the high school with coming cuts. So they see high line or running start as a good, more stable alternative. That kind of general attitude I think is going to hurt us in the long run.
Question, could we just use an example calculus? Because I do that in high school. And then I also have to take it again at different level of college. So when you say they may take calculus, maybe high line because it's a stable program, not certainly we keep calculus here. Is that the kind of competition for the money you guys are talking about?
It could be that it gets a little bit calculus per se. It it depends on whether you have an accredited course in calculus. I mean, you can teach calculus in high school, but it may not be recognized by any college because it hasn't gone through all the paperwork to get it.
That's why I had to do it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So there's that, that's why college in the high school is a is a part of the process is that it gets that credit. And you're get, so the students are guaranteed that they get that credit for college and that's that's where and in order to do that, you know, the teachers have to get themselves certified and you got, you know, there's a fair amount of paperwork that goes through. But you know, it's kind of like, well, that's what our students want. And so we would need to kind of get more of that. And we have a few of them, bunch of types of credits. I'm not sure exactly, I kind of forget which ones they are now, but.
We have English, one oh one, one oh two, one oh five. And then we have pre calc and calculus.
Okay.
And then we have psychology, but it's only for the second semester is college credit. That's all the ones that I know right now.
Okay.
And to be accurate, I had pre calculated, I was on Bainbridge and they were math crazy and it was equivalent when I went to school, like I just slept in the glasses. It was the same same area. Yeah.
But anyway, that's that's an ongoing thing to be to work on.
Working on what, because I I'm just thinking the math there just real quick is if we said there's nine students going to.
Hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty.
Okay, so a hundred and forty, if you take the math of the money that's taken across, what does that equate to for our teachers that could fill those courses in? I mean, I think that's kind of what we should be asking the question, right? And if that money can come back to here, the district, just wondering how that, how that, I think we need to at least have a conversation, look into that. If you know, for the future, if that's what it is, a hundred and forty students.
Yeah, I think that's part of the portrait of the regular conversation too. And we have to, we have to talk about all of those pieces, right? Because you know, it, you know, I guess what I'm hearing is the students need a guarantee or they want a guarantee of high level forces, right, in their school. So that's something to figure out. How do we ensure that that gets protected? We want to protect all the other things that like Brahman, all the things that are interested.
The other complicated factor on this is that um some students that go to running start, running start at a college, you know, assumes a certain level of maturity of the students, which some students have, some students do not. And some students can get into trouble when they go there and then don't have the, I mean, they don't, they aren't babysitting you. And so.
We've had some students come back.
Yeah, and so it's it's and so to some degree, if it could be contained in the high school, then they would get, you know, the counseling support that they would get in the high school. So there's advantages there too.
There's one more sidebar is looking at the trades. So when I was in Boeing, I was down in the machine. They have a huge manufacturing plant in Auburn and there are people there who are doing calculus formulas in their head for speed rates and all kinds of things on these um computer and machines that they had.
Yeah.
And I was always amazed because I think I'm going to probably take in ten minutes of calculus, what they do in their head, because they do it every day. So it it's finally get all this other, I'm on my way to college and credits and all that other stuff. And also to keep in mind, I was maybe going to the trades only need that education here.
Yeah, and there's a whole set of courses that they call tech prep, which you can, you can get that technology, you can get some of those advanced skills
Yes.
within the context of a location that you want to go for. So, yeah. And those are great courses to have that are as well. And we have some of them, I think, but not.
Thank you. I think it's very interesting, not used, it's fine. I think it's interesting going back to what you said, Director Hoover, about the what's the information you need and the direction that we need to go and the data points. I think this is, this is the exact side of conversation I think the board should be having about the direction of where we're going to be spending the dollars. Where we're going to be, what's going to be needed for our students, hearing from our student representatives here about what they're saying and needing and talking, I think that's that's the kind of direction this speech right directly into like we were talking about earlier. So things such as this, you know, we have the conversation, you know, about it. These are the things that as the board, we need to be aware of and then also help direct the school, you know, and that's something that we want to take on because like our superintendent said, there's a lot of protecting of funding and different things now to keep it, you know, until we get back to our identity status that's here. So I appreciate that and I can see where there's good value in us spending our time and trying to, trying to go big through all of this um and things. So, thank you. All right, so we're going on to the next part of the MML dual language and Afghan refugee Wida report and analysis. Oh, is that right? It's love acronym, so. Is there any questions?
Yeah, so my my first question is around, since we have a, you know, we've known for a while, we have the um significant increase in the Portuguese speaking students primarily coming from Angola, I guess, and Africa, that kind of, so. I'm interested in, you know, you talk about translation, translation is one thing, but you know, cultural, I mean, what our community liaisons do is much more than just translations. And I'm wondering if for that, that was kind of my question about how are we supporting those students beyond just the language translation? Because I know we had some, I mean, this is kind of one of our dilemmas when we have the, you know, the the community liaisons are classified and then they're getting either in or out on seniority basis rather than on student D base, which is what, I mean, this is, we have a bunch of students, I forget how many of them there are. We change four.
Or is that my experience going up for Portuguese?
Portuguese eighty five.
Eighty.
Eighty five, or an MLL status and a hundred and seven, you know.
Right.
Yeah. And so, you know, how are we getting the, you know, the kind of the cultural support for those? Do we, are we doing anything on that or are we kind of?
Just reintroduce myself, the Joseph Proctor, Director of PK twelve Education College Writingist. I tried to answer the question to the context you asked, but I think perhaps I'm not able to answer it exactly as you're looking for, because I don't actually supervise and manage the family of these on program. Um so I will need to get further information on that piece, but broadly speaking. Um unfortunately, we can't do a perfectly ratioed support for language and community. And that's just, you know, one of the challenges that we have based on.
Yeah, I think it's something we should probably be thinking about when we're like thinking about bargaining as to, you know, because um we need to be able to bargain in a way that's going to spur our students. And as the bargaining, you know, agreement is getting in the way of that, then we need to think about, you know, rethinking that that particular bargaining, is I guess kind of my point, which.
Yeah, but I think language and culture.
Yeah.
Leads to different dynamics.
Yes.
There are several frightful
Yeah.
Countries that cultures are drastically different.
Yeah.
When I heard Portuguese, I was thinking Brazil, but.
Yeah.
And no one is.
Yeah, right.
We have Portugal, Portugal's Portuguese is different than Brazil. You run the risk of unequally equating the cultural support with the language support. So at the core, it's so bad. We spend a lot of time early in the year, you know, it's hard to do assessment if it's in the language you're not proficient in. Well, the language regardless of the culture, we help with the math. So I just, I, yeah, but embedding it into the collective bar can can introduce a whole different spider web because.
No, no, the language I'm talking about, allowing us, the district to, you know, allocate the the culture, the community liaisons based on current need, the cultural needs of our students, whether they're coming from, you know, Angola or whether they're coming from wherever.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's actually, yeah, language is always misleading because you need to really understand what country they're coming from, which is language plus culture.
Particularly, but I do think if you prioritize language bridging organically, the culture of your will come because the students and the families will bring it. And and identify the message you either bridge. So I just, I just, I know that there's not an exact bridge of language and culture as far as supporting those those needs. I think maybe an unfair expectation in the conversation.
I will just add that one of the things that we do do is one of the things we have prioritized is when we're hiring, right? Or even recalling, right, that staff. We, that is something we do have, you know, we that we can actually set criteria for, right? So making sure that, for example, when we're hiring or even recalling back staff to come, you know, prioritizing languages, prioritizing people with special education endorsements, those types of things. So or MLL endorsements. So those are things that we're doing, you know. So I I will say that even though there is a process in place, we actually have supported a process to actually get to the values of what we need for our students. So that's why I'll just say that's been something that we've been really intentional about as a, as a, as a district.
Yeah, that's good.
Went on to the heels of all of that, as maybe lame to talk about it, but we went from zero to there is a hundred and seven. Is it, is it, is there an expected attrition rate over time?
Well, I would just.
Is there a curve?
Well, I'll just say. And we have some preliminary data, so these are, I would say, yes. I'll just say that 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 group is a group that we're monitoring really closely with some of the changes, the immigration, you know, that that is a group that is impacted. So it's something we're monitoring very closely. So this might, well, this number might be very different next year, just 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 stating.
I mean, no disrespect, I don't need to be in doubt.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I just, I just wanted to be honest.
Yeah.
But also hopefully it won't, but but I expect that that this is going to change drastically. Maybe it'll go up increasingly, maybe it'll go down, but it it seems to be something that's we're monitoring, we're looking at attendance, we're looking at enrollment, we're monitoring that very, very closely with all of our groups.
And and I just have to say, you know, as far as I'm I'm very glad that we're doing such a good job or CFO when monitoring the budget because things like this, when they come up, we want to be able to backfill. And right now, we always have to, the the thing that's struggling with us is that we have to lose something to do something, you know, and I think and everybody knows that. And so that's what we're fighting right now. And so we need to get back to a healthy spot where we have that percentage that we're talking about so we can backfill when this happens. You know, but right now it's it's a lose something to do something. And so we're just trying to be very careful and mindful of that. So.
Yeah.
Um I definitely appreciate everybody in the room here to know how hard it's working. So to get that done. So, thank you.
A little quick fun fact, our, it turns out our intern, our intern superintendent actually speaks Portuguese.
Yes, he does.
Which I had no idea.
And I didn't even know this either. His dad's from Brazil. So I didn't know that either.
He's does.
Yeah, yeah. He's from Brazil. He's actually from Brazil. So, yeah, he speaks Portuguese and he's really excited to practice using it. So that's a good thing.
So sometimes you get lucky.
Yeah, sometimes you get lucky.
Um, the other, you mentioned, you're talking in here about the fact that the, the Wida scores, um. Uh, drop off, uh, when it gets to the secondary schools and, um, I actually, um, attended, um. The Weaver Conference, by the way, the district did not pay for me to do that, but they did it on my own. And it turns out that that's, um, I attended a really good session on that particular subject because. What happens in the Wida is, when it goes to the secondary level, it starts to get very content-based. Which is a totally different, you know, and so, this is a, a problem, it's not just an issue for us. I mean, when we're looking at this, we need to understand that this is, that's the way Wida is because the whole, everybody takes it and. It's interesting, there's a guy, um, and I can send you this guy's presentation, Brian Gable, who's a. Assistant Coordinator at Clifford Park, and he spent the whole thing looking at. How we should be looking at that data, uh, because it's, it's basically criterion-based as opposed to norm reference. And if we looked at it at a norm reference basis, we'd probably be look, we'd probably do better. Uh, you know, so, anyway, that was just, that's an interesting, um, it's. It's kind of a flaw in the way Wida is given, and so we, you know, when you're looking at it, we need to kind of understand that as we're, as we're looking at that data. Um, the last point of this one, I wanted to, uh, just talk about, let's see, it was a page forty. Where you're listing the, the baseline measures, and so this kind of gets to, that gets to one of my favorite points of. Presenting the, the, this is, this is from our, um, uh, strategic plan and the measure. And you've got the net standard measure and the progressive measure, it would be helpful there. And then you have this other progressive measure, fifteen point seven, which is not Wida, that's the L elevation or elevate or something, whatever. Elevate, yeah, elevate, that other tool that we're using for some reason.
It's a point of data wrong.
Yeah, it's, okay, so, um, that one is actually, you know, what our strategic plan says, we're gonna. You know, that five point eight, let's say, sufficient progress, and the three, thirty-four point three is gonna go up by ten percent, so. You know, again, this is, in order to make this, this is, you know, when we're talking about making things easy to comprehend really quick. If this was in a, a table, that just says, okay, here's what it was for twenty-three, twenty-four, here's what our goal says ten percent. Here's what the goal, and just actually lay out the goal, and which is thirty-seven percent.
Scott, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the word table this week. Might have never kind of.
This would make it much easier to, to read.
I absolutely agree with that, and to, um, to point, I would be happy to take something like this, this report actually is a compilation of a couple of reports.
Yeah.
Kind of consolidated into one, but if we are talking about a streamlining, I would take the strategic plan, simple goal, and then just give you. A snapshot of the progression, maybe you don't want forty-three pages, or maybe you want ten pages, and just throwing random numbers out there, but.
Yeah.
I think there's a way for me to still, for all of us to still communicate the same type of information in a more concise way.
Right.
So, um, happy to develop this conversation, hope it gives a better, more.
Yeah, and just labeling, you know, the, so the fifteen point, that's, that's an elevation measure, and the three point three, that's a Wida progression. I looked at that and I had to go back and, what is fifteen minus, okay, anyway, that's my.
So elevation is the portal that actually the Wida feeds into, so Wida feeds into it, and then also the S, the S bar scores, the. The standard, the smarters, uh, goals, actually, uh, smarter balance. Feeds into, so it caps, encapsulates all of that, and it just, it gives us the information.
But I don't understand, so we're just saying thirty-four point three is progressing and this elevation says fifteen point seven is progressing? I don't get that, yeah, this, you know, gonna be to explain, you hear, but I don't understand why.
Well, elevation's gonna be in the city mass next week, so that's a good thing to talk about.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other questions?
I, I have a question, could you explain to me the different, uh, levels of proficiency and like, what they mean?
Ooh, that is a bit difficult to.
If you, if you can't do it right now.
I could send you.
Yeah.
The P D S.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a fairly long. But it's, yeah, I would recommend you look at it to try and get it understand, I had to redo it a few times myself.
Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you very much. We're going on to our I R E D second diagnostic. So any questions about this report?
So, um, and that, you, you're talking about the principals who receive a street data type survey. So for me, street data, so this is the whole issue about, you know, what do we do with the data, how do we analyze the data? Particularly the disproportionality data that we see, you know, that's been presented here, and, you know, the lack in. Latino students and so forth, um. Street data to me, my understanding of that's talking like students and parents, I don't understand, I mean, I just gotta explain to me a little bit more about. What you have, and the principals who receive a street data type survey, that doesn't sound to me like it's gonna be going to. Students that are gonna be getting information from students and, and parents.
Thank you, I could have worded that better, it really is intended to be that, we'll create a survey, um, uh. On prompt questions that I will work with principals, train them, and they will go forward and work with their school staff, the kids and the parents to. Um, do like empathy, um, surveys and get information on street. So we don't be asking the principals, uh, they, I think their opinion matters too, but.
Yeah, sure.
Be the user.
Yeah, right, right, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
I think we've got plenty of, of staff input on various things, should, I mean, you need years of students and parents.
Right.
About what's going, okay, um, yeah, I'll look forward to, to that. Uh, data, what's the, the. Um, yeah, I'm kind of interested in the, I think this seems to have been an ongoing issue about getting. The high school to do I R E D, there's a lot of resistance for, you know, I'm trying to understand a little bit. Is it because, uh, they don't, usually, I mean, my experience. Part of it, if I really, if you give it and they don't understand why you're doing it and how it's gonna help them, then you're gonna get blowback, right? And so is that, is that the issue here? And I, I'm getting started, maybe.
That's right.
I should have introduced myself earlier, I said Scotland, I cheated back, and I think some schools see him, so, um.
Yeah, did you want to?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, guys, have any opinions on I R E D?
Uh.
I'm interested in what the.
You wanna go first? Personally, I found no purpose in it, I hated it, it seemed like my teachers did nothing with it, so. That was my opinion through elementary school and middle school, um, and then what I got from, you know, my friends is. You know, when their teachers did focus on it, it didn't help them, they, they, you know, felt like. You know, especially some of my friends that have like learning disabilities, they felt like they were underplaced in the I R E D system. And then their teacher, you know, just didn't, you know, when they followed strictly with what I already said, they didn't get the support they needed. Were placed way too low than they were supposed to. I don't like I R E D, my, that's my thing, I don't, I don't know, you know. What the numbers say on how it actually does help students grow, I don't know, but from a personal level, I don't like I R E D.
Yeah, for me, I also don't like I R E D just because of the fact that I feel like it doesn't. Like whenever I do an I R E D test, no one really goes back to it after we do the test, like no one really goes back to the subjects that I just took in the test. And I think I remember a point during show alter when I was taking the test, and like, my teacher was just like, it's okay, it's not gonna matter after you take it anyways. So just, like, I just ended up doing it like, as I wanted to do it all, and because I was super scared, or I was like. Trying really hard on it, I just did it because I had to.
Yeah, it's, it, to me, it's not more like a chore to students, didn't actually do it, you know, cuz a lot of the teachers. Either they, one, don't really follow what I already is saying, although so I was in elementary school before they. Are doing this new I R E D math curriculum, so I don't know what it is now, and then in middle school. Played even less of a role in what was happening, and then for, from what I've heard from my peers, that. When their teachers actually did follow it, they didn't feel it helped them that much.
So that's on a really good beat there.
And as to address that, thank you, but I think that, well, I appreciate the honesty, here's how it felt to you. Um, so they brought some points that are, uh, very valuable to the making value out of the assessment. One thing I think previous years until this year, um, there was a disconnect of the tool per diagnostic versus the curriculum materials. So the content is probably separate, not fault and not coordinated, now it is, so we should be seeing more growth after this year and beyond because there is coordination. Uh, to the K, um, K through, K through five curriculum, I know, um. You know, the programmer is designed to just really, um, uh, address learning standards through eighth grade. We've talked to high school staff, you know, they recognize it, I think still lingering from COVID era that. There's a lot of ninth graders who still could live benefit from the materials that are geared toward content typically taught in eighth grade or even seventh. So that was why ninth graders are taking it, but it has a lot to do with how is a teacher using information, does it? Is it, does it help define instruction, is it, the computer tool is always supposed to be a twelve to forty-five minutes a week. Like twenty or twenty-five minutes, two different sections, so if it's used too much, that. That becomes a core instruction, that's missed the point, we need the human being, the teacher, and that he is pleased to be. During the teaching, use that information to say, oh, okay, see, you already passed fractions, you already forgot decimals, whatever comes next. And it's supposed to be adapted to so that the, um, tool will seem how, where are you proficient, and then give you the. The, where are you ready next for your own independent work level, so it's a lot of factors that need to come together to make. Get value out of the diagnostic.
Sounds like from the student's point of view though, and tell me if I'm wrong, it sounds like you need to rebrand it or something, because if we haven't been using it properly up to this point. And then now we have a generation or a bunch of students that don't think there's any value in it, and staff. It sounds like too, that are there, that we're gonna need to do some rebranding and some different, and you're gonna continue to use it. You know, because how are you gonna change the culture of, of, as I thought our young man just said here today is, is, you know, I found it pretty pointless. And then the representative said, well, I just did it just cause, and I didn't really try, you know, and you're hearing it from. You know?
And that, that is, I think, directly why the reality of our low completion rate. I think, you know, typically the youngest children, if they don't sense this importance for a progress, they would just, they assume that's true. And I suppose I understand you, their, their brains are thinking more complex, that's like, they're kind of wanting, why is, where am I getting value? So I think it's, any district would probably say they have a lower.
I think it's a bigger conversation about the whole, cuz I was, I was, I was a principal of a school where my school happened to be in the news. Back in two thousand and ten, for wanting to opt out of the state assessments, right? So I think in general, so what we're talking about are like those big satellite assessments, right? I think that's the conversation around, uh, some big, the big assessments. Um, cuz I've had to have that conversation, I've had to meet with my teachers and on and on and on, and so, um, there is a. I think we're gonna talk about that, and when, and we talk about that too all the time too, is, isn't even like we talked about for ninth grade, it shouldn't even just like. Not do that, right, and just make sure that in high school it's focused on. You know, the course content, the course assessments, the, um, so we've had that discussion too, so that's really helpful, so. Um, doesn't help me think through middle school more, that we need to talk through, cuz I will say what I received, when I did all my appeal meetings. With all my teachers, every one of them showed me and were proud around the growth data around students and in their classroom. So I would say different experience I've had with some of the teachers and even the students, um, but this doesn't mean. Your point's not valid, right, so.
And I, and I think we, we have switched, when we first started using it, it was all about proficiency, proficiency, and, you know, I mean, moving to a growth.
Mindset.
I think is much more, and I think, I think students will, would understand that better. And, you know, I mean, you guys were a few years ago, well, and you're just maybe about three years ago, you were in show alter, yeah, so, but it's, there's, there's been a change.
But there has to be, we have to talk about that whole question about high school, cuz I think that came up, I think it was a discussion to keep it in just ninth grade only.
Right.
Because so many students in eighth grade, pre, post-COVID, were, were struggling, and we had a lot of many newcomers. Um, but I think it's a good conversation to have, what do we do for high school?
I think also high school teachers have been working for years to create their own, um, assessments, and so I think they, they're still struggling with. How to, um, spend too much time instruction on assessments and doing both, they conflict, so I think it's getting used to, um. For them also to see the value, they want to, but they may not yet see the value, so.
It's their bigger conversation.
Yes, so the one other, uh, point, uh, moment to just bring up on this whole thing is the, is the wide range, I'm talking about, um. So the fact that, you know, at one school like, you know, in one grade, there's ten percent of students making grade level. You know, growth, and then, you know, another, uh, like another school is six, or another classroom is sixty, so. That's, uh, to me, that, what that says, that's, there's huge inconsistency within our work curriculum.
Yes.
And so then the question becomes how, you know, how are we kind of, uh, improving the consistency, and I think. You know, coaching is, is a good way to go on that, I think, um. Uh, there's, what do we, I don't know, are there other strategies that we're using to kind of help? I mean, you could do, you know, better, um, professional learning communities, grade level, you know. Can you say some workshops and other things that we're doing to kind of improve the consistency across the system? Because some, some places are doing really well.
Yes.
And then some places are not at all, right?
It, it, yes, it's surprisingly broad.
Yes.
Jump, or maybe even at a grade level, maybe one classroom, there's.
Yeah.
Five percent, you know, stretch, go there, that's sixty-eight percent, well, why?
Right.
So that's part of what I was just gonna work with principals to get information, also to teach the kids what, what's the difference, it's not three percent, it's. Fifty percent, yeah, huge.
And I, and I've heard, you know, anecdotes, I mean, I've heard anecdotes from parents that will say, you know, my kid was in this classroom, it was horrible. Went to a new teacher in the classroom, and all of a sudden, everything was wonderful, you know, so, I don't know what's going on there.
It is a lot about consistency, it's racking, and usually, even things like, did you have same amount of time allocated to math? We know there's, I'd say, at least now, a day needs to be for math, specifically, are they using the instructions, like, are they using the academic curriculum? Or they still putting onto what used to be used, you know, that's typical to the noise, some people say, like, I taught the other year, tutorials for ten years, I really liked that. And I appreciate that, and now here for three years, and because, you know, you gotta come up to what the curricula says is valuable to get the value for the kids. So our I R E D consultants are continuing to the P D, with seventy hours total, including all the spikes that get their own training at Brussels Administrators. So looking at, um, what practices have shown to be the best idea for kids, and, and then working with principals and mentors when we visit classrooms. To see all those practices happen, if not, let us coach you back and come back to see if that is happening.
So, there's a lot of moving parts.
Yes.
COVID influences, differences between what the teachers are doing, you can see what the students are thinking. Is there accountability between the teachers, I mean, if you say they take a test, it goes away and never here again, how is this supposed to not there even progressing? So do we have some requirement that they sit down and say, here's where you were, here's your goal?
Well, we get them, but they're just paper copies of it's.
But do they translate it to you, or do you, I mean, none?
Not, not.
I expect, so. In order for it to have me, cuz you're like a man, you probably look at that, you can see your own progress or you can't, right? But would it help, or does it make sense for the teacher to email, Campbell, here you took this test, I'm gonna one-on-one with you right now. Here's where you are on the scale, keep going, you're doing great, or, um, you're flagging here, but along the third way through school, here's what I'm gonna do. To help you succeed, like what we were hearing in those other classes, right? Um, and maybe there's success happening in certain areas, we just need to model that, oh, I don't, this is not my purview, to, to be honest. I just, I'm, I'm, I just hate to see it wasted, and if it's wasted, then I wanna know, is there something better we should be doing? And if there isn't, why are we doing something that's bad? And, and I don't wanna call it bad, cuz it's probably being used well by teachers, and it feels to say, here's evidence and progress happening on our students.
I just kind of think it goes back, someone has to interject, it goes back to what Director Larson was saying. It's about consistency, I think it's about also, so when I, when I think of somebody that's struggling with how to use something. Then it goes back, I go back to the whole notion of what are we up doing to support, like, is it the right professional development? There's two kinds of professional development, you can just train people how to use something, or you can really, uh, sit with them and help them and coach them through. And making sure that they're making meaning from it, just like with students, right? And we also know that, um, meaningful feedback to students, for example, when you turn a writing assignment and you just get back the score. Lot less meaningful than somebody who really explains to you what it is that you needed to improve on, or what's the paragraph you put it down, or how you could have made word sense. Or whatever the focus was, and I think that's what we need to be focusing on is meaningful feedback to. And I think that's what we need to be focusing on is meaningful feedback to students. And so I would say that's also making me wonder, do we need to do some level of support for schools around that? Like, and where do we need to do that? Because if that's not happening, if you're just getting a piece of paper, that's not what it's, that's not, that's not meaningful, right? It's just not.
But even with something that's saying, it feels like low value because you had this paper, you just naturally kind of think this must not weigh too much because no one's talking. And also, well, part of the feedback we have given to our I-Ready trainers, and this is after like the August or September sessions, is always where our teachers said, they're, they're kind of training us as if we've never been exposed to it. And we're, we don't want to waste any sessions to be told, here's how you click. I know I'm exaggerating a little bit. They'll say, just, we want to get down to the structural strategies for using the tools. I think, unless it, that's what we want to hear. So that's what we told everybody, trainers, let's really move past how do you click buttons? They're ready for that. Get on to the structural strategies. So that's when they had to think it's improved in there during the course of this year.
Yeah, and I think it was discussed, the timeliness, I mean, I noticed that years ago, we used to have a program where the, the students would take a test and immediately got the feedback as to what was right and wrong. And that's, you know, that's what you really need. And then along with some healthy other strategy that I'm not interested in that we're doing in various places is co-teaching strategy. That's another one I'm really interested in because it, it tends to be, it's kind of expansion. But that's what I need to, when I go down to navigate it, if, if, when we're doing that and it's effective. You know, I love, I mean, we heard it in the eighth grade D L A forces this year. So more of that, that's another really good strategy. And then, that they cost money, but it's effective, so.
Right.
It's a delicate, once the lovely data, you have sufficient funds, then that would be one of the top strategies to want to work on.
Thank you.
Any other questions about I-Ready?
I have a question. One concern I have, you know, as a student, you know, the new adoption of the I-Ready math program in K through five, I'm sure there's been plenty of considerations made, but are there any worries that, you know, since, you know, in the K through five education time period, students are kind of learning how to learn, that there might be some not really meshing with, you know, the middle school curriculum and then the high school curriculum?
Yeah, and this, and this, one thing you hear from some veteran, not all, but some veteran teachers, it is a change from even when I began teaching many, many years ago. It was, here's a book, turn to page fifteen, we'll practice four problems, the more, take this fifteen problems, I'm going to do them. And it worked for some kids and we know some adults still say, I'm still don't want to do that. So, but now it's more like explore the numbers and get used to the concrete else of the abstract. That's a new way. It still gets, you know, math, there are actual real answers. You can't say there's no right answers. Yes, there are, there are right answers. But there's multiple ways to get to it. So that's what's a little different. So it's a challenge for people who've never used that type of process as a teacher. So it will be, this is our first year with it. I think it's just going to get deeper when they, we're all kind of, okay, it's not going away. We spent a lot of tax firm money on these books. We're going to get the use out of it. So, but it's going to be just making good use of it. And the feedback should be, as you know, you've taken the diagnostics, it takes you to tell, like gives you hard questions, it's easier one to find where you're at. And that's what instruction should be at that level.
I did ask the kids when I went to Caspi View, I was principal for the day in December, so I got to see math classes. And I asked the kids if they liked it, they were, and they were, yeah, this is really great. So, but some of their kids, they, they might like math, other kids, I might answer, I don't want to, and they would have said, no. We, because that happens and it's typically around fourth grade when all of that starts happening. I was a fourth grade teacher when people started reading math. But I would say that's one of the things we're doing, Aiden, is we are, we are actually going to do three visits in looking in classrooms specifically on the math curriculum. So that is something we're going to do. We're going to go to all three of the elementary schools. We're visiting around three to three, eight maybe classrooms, all different grade levels. And we're specifically looking at the implementation of the math.
Right.
So that's, we're curious too. All the questions you're asking, we're curious too. So if you want to come, we'll, we'll give you the schedule.
Sure, yeah.
I think you should go.
We'll be.
Why not?
Yeah.
If you're, if you, if you're interested, you're not, of course not, but if you are, let's pull them.
Yeah, I'm just worried about, you know, the transition from elementary to.
For sure. That's something we can talk with too, because actually Mr. Christopher is going to come and so is Miss Perez to one of those sessions as well. So I think that's important. So we're, we're curious too. So we're looking at that as well. So, yeah.
And part of the transition between, you know, elementary and the higher secondaries is, well, I mean, they're all under the Common Core or state standards. But the, the change there is from just kind of rote doing things to thinking about why you're doing it. And I think that's, that happens more at the secondary level. And so getting that kind of thinking style in now at the elementary level should serve students well. It has done well.
Yes, and does take it beyond the memorization. We know that certain, you have to have a foundation. You have no certain facts. You just can't skip that. But I just think it's like a structure. You lay this concrete slant and do it well, so it doesn't crack. And then you can put it through the course of therapy. You can't do pretty much in the dirt because it will just collapse. So you need the foundation, the basic skills. But it's, then, you know, explore the numbers. We know how many adults do we know who say, yes, I built ice toe, or we never did get fractions? A lot, we have a lot. A lot of my family say, did you even understand your wife was on the math? So I did, but a lot of people do not. But it's partly because they just learned how to memorize certain factor, fraction, or processes. So they can do the computation fine, but can they apply it to different circumstance? Or go from words to figure out what the numbers, where we respond to the words? That's really hard if they never had a chance to practice that in school. So that would be partly changed for elementary folks who aren't used to that. And also, like you said, for secondary folks to make sure the kids have those opportunities. Because then you would know the concepts for as an adult with your life.
That's our fourth grade, because that's where we're crashing.
It's correct, and division.
Yes.
Yes.
It's a hard, it's a harder transition.
Yes. Thank you, thank you.
We're going to move on to our action items. So we'll start with A, the approval of human resources staffing report.
I don't see one.
I don't see it either.
It's not attached.
We're previewing nothing.
I like it.
There it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Instead of white contacts, so this is the. He's brought the data bigger.
Yes, a lot bigger.
It just, actually, if she, when she cooked it, it came, it's here. So if you actually go to your agenda, it's there now. Yep.
I see how you guys are.
Always keeping you on your toes.
Yeah, I know.
Keeping you on your toes.
It's the solution. I'm a happy girl.
It's nice to hire an elementary instructional coach. Yay.
I know. This is a long time since I've been, yeah. Let me see if I can pull it up here. Oh, yeah, it's here on mine. You don't. It's not on mine either.
It's in administrative content instead of public content.
Okay, well, we'll look at that.
Yeah, I will.
Can they just give us a high level summary?
High level summary.
Yeah, it's about the baseline to get it.
Help us pass it.
Now that's the data we need.
Yeah, we're keeping on our toes, but we do need some help here.
Human resources, thank you, products. So we have two new certificated staff positions. One at Caspi View Elementary, it's the M T S S instructional coach. And then we have the M L L teacher that we are adding at Foster High School. We had increased funding for the T V I P, the Transvendable Education Source that came later in the school year. So that is why we were able to add that position at Foster.
And then, yes, would have been really nice to have had that, maybe not like your boss.
Agreed, agreed, a hundred percent agree.
Yes, but then we, we had a reservation for the A S B secretary athletics position earlier this winter. And so we were able to hire Logan Shields, who has been in our, in the school system as a substitute for a staff member and has worked in different positions at Foster and gave the opportunity as well as able to offer a complete position to support athletics. And then we had a staff member not return unfortunately from, from the, for qualifying reasons. And so that's, I talked about elementary on the first time. And Roger Vera Carver also unfortunately relocating from food service. So those are two separations that are listed at the bottom.
Going to hire a new secondary teacher for elementary here.
Yes, in conference with the principal, the decision was made to have a long-term substitute finish out the school year because this is somebody that actually is, it's a grow your own applicant, somebody that graduated from high school, B. Eden. Graduated from Foster High School and is aiming to get a full-time position in the U N A grade level. So she will take over the secondary classroom at Toccoa Elementary for the rest of the year.
Yes.
And she was also in the long-term position earlier in the year when Pamela went on her leave.
So she was in it.
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's a number. Correct.
So just two things, out of all of this, major victories? And it can be just one, things that you're happy about with this report? And then, I don't know if they were frustrating or just a challenge.
Yeah.
And you'd like us to know that.
Yeah, the victory for sure is being able to add the two positions, one in the elementary school and one at the high school. Having those funding sources come through and also having qualified applicants that the staff and the principals support. So I think definitely, those are the victories. And those two staff members are already hitting the ground running and they're working really hard, the teams. I think the frustration part, I think it goes back to sort of the conversation center today. It's just, you know, the funding is not available to the district at the outset of the school year. And it, it does create challenges when we add staff later. There's lots of catch-up that needs to take place and it's, it's a strain on the system. It's hard on students, it's hard on colleagues when we don't have people in the seat, so to speak, at the beginning of the year. And, and so I would say that that is probably the leading frustration. Hopefully there's advocacy work that we can do as a system to ensure that we have the resources at the beginning.
All right, so we needed to give an approval here and we have a motion for approval.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's passed. Thank you. All right, so I'm going to be approval of policies. Is there any comments or questions? These look familiar. You've been through these. Is there any, perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you. There's more coming.
All right. Now we're moving on to the approval of board budget priorities and budget philosophy. Is there any comment or?
So all my promotion?
Yes, please, thank you.
Yeah, usually.
Yeah, yeah, I'll stand again, comments, correct. Thank you.
Move, can I say?
Yeah.
Any, any comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
D, approval of the overnight travel request gear up college tours. Any comments or questions? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that will close out except for our public comment. If there's anybody present or online, we'll give a few moments.
Is everybody online? It's, it's down. Who they don't have open their mic?
I think they're not. They can raise their hand.
Okay, if there's none, we'll close the public comment portion of our meeting.
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
And we have executive session, it says.
Do we adjourn first?
So your session is blank?
It is. Moving to this? We're going to move to adjourn. Is that right?
Yep.
I don't know. Okay, good. I was like, that's wrong. That's what I'm on. Okay, so, so we have a motion to move to adjourn, please.
I did.
Motion. Motion, perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So closes. Have more.
Bye, Charlie. Thank you, everyone.